Around that stuff, so again, just treat each other in a good way. And you know, just keep moving forward in a good direction. And again, appreciate all of you for being in the space, where are your leadership? And again, you know, just be mindful of that. So, thank you, Jantel. So with that, councilman, or, oh, we're going to Wazilia. And then, and then, councilman Ironclad, do you want to do the prayer? Sorry.
Mr. Chair, before we do the prayer, you know, one of our members of the circle lost her mother. So, you know, when we come out of the, get them with the prayer, you know, I'd like to make a motion to try to assist her family. And I ask that, the prayer that our councilman is going to do, you know, we dedicate that prayer to that family also.
All right, maybe councilman.
La vaste lot, kashla, na he chushe, okidhha, yateki, tanah, nipithe.
Thank you. And councilman, we'll come to your motion. We'll do the words of encouragement slash honoring of Gerald One Feather first. And we'll come to your motion, councilman. Thank you. So we have honoring Gerald One Feather. And one of the things, council, that's coming up is, you know, there's going to be the 50th anniversary of the college this week. And I was invited to give the words, the opening address and stuff like that. So I'll be preparing for that on Saturday. And I think that link will go around. If not, we'll get the secretary to share that with everyone. But we let the secretary invite some of the members of Gerald's family to be here and present in, as we kind of talk about, you know, the honoring and honoring our people who made significant contributions and to our society and to our oriata and to our people in the college itself. Has, you know, done an amazing job. I'm a proud graduate. And I'm sure many on the council are proud graduates or associated in some ways with the college. So with that being said, you know, we invited Ingrid One Feather and her brother Delmar One Feather to sing the, an honoring song in the memory of Gerald, but also just kind of in the, in the legacy of the college and do it in a good way. And thank you to our sergeant-at-arms for waziling us. So, and just real quick, I'll just read two resolutions and then we can go into the honoring song. And then, and then, but I just want to also kind of remember Gerald too. Because I, you know, it's one of the things when I first ran for office in 2008, he was really encouraging because he was just, you know, I think he saw the value of getting young people in office and all that. And I was 29. And, you know, under our current law, I'd be too young to run for council. But at the same time, it was, you know, he, you know, for the state legislature, you have to be 23 to run for office, you know? And I think that's one of the things that, you know, that he saw. And he was like the youngest chair, I think, I believe, in the history of our tribe as well. And it was just, you know, it was good to kind of get words of encouragement from him. You know, I think that's, again, that's so valuable, especially being in, you know, as male leaders, as female leaders, is just getting words of encouragement from our people who are supporting us, all this kind of stuff. So, so with that, real quick, during his term of presidency, April 10th, 1970 to April 10th, 1972, former tribal chair president Gerald One Feather was instrumental in establishing of Lakota Higher Education Center, now Ogallawakou College, along with Virgil Killstreet and Kelvin Jumpinball. The college has provided higher education to members, numerous members of the Owasu tribe. This week, Ogallawakou College celebrates its 50th anniversary. At this time, the Kilo Muiso administration would like to take time to recognize former President Gerald One Feather for his successful effort with the Ogallawakou College. And here's an ordinance that came about, and again, going back to our history. This was the original ordinance that established Ogallawakou College. And so you can kind of get your history, ordinance 71-01A. So I think it was the first ordinance that came out of that year. It ordered to approve the charter of Lakota Education Higher Center, Education Center, whereas the Owasu tribal council desires to provide opportunity for higher education on the pine ridge, in pine ridge reservation to promote health and economic and social welfare of the Owasu tribe. And whereas for such proposed, the Owasu tribe desires to establish a public corporation capable of establishing and operating institutions for the granting of post-secondary degrees, certificates, certificates, especially the associate's and arts degree, and of entertaining into agreements with other public and private agencies to the end of their offering of higher education on the reservation. Provided however, that all such agreements shall obligate such public corporations alone and not the Owasu tribe as such. Whereas, the Owasu tribe considers it advisable that the coordination and regulation of the higher education be under a single body. Now therefore be resolved that the Owasu tribal council does hereby charter and establish a public corporation to be known as Lakota Higher Education Center, which shall be able to establish and operate institutions of granting post-secondary degrees and certificate certificates, especially that of the associate of arts, and/or entering agreements with a public or private agency to offer higher education on the reservation and to generally coordinate and regulate all higher education on pine ridge reservation and issues to the center, the charter attached hereto, and incorporate by the reference herein to take effect immediately on accordance with terms and conditions of the charter, which shall regulate the affairs of the center certification. So that was the original charter establishing Ogallawakou College. Now in its 50th year, just to have that kind of vision and support and just, you know, understanding that emphasis on education, you know, with numerous councils, and there's always, you know, there's always, you know, there was always support for that, you know? I'm sure it's not, it was sometimes a rocky road. But at the same time, you know, the college kind of went through and saw, you know, how to get through this. And thank you again to the leadership of President Shortbow, where we meet at our, usually our general council meetings. We've been meeting there due to COVID. There's just been a really good and strong collaboration. So, but that, I'd like to call up, well, Ingrid, Ingrid One Feather and Delmar One Feather to sing the honor song. Are they, are they here?
Ingrid, I'm here.
Okay. Okay, Delmar, if you want to come up and sing the song. And Ingrid, if you want to mention something, that's fine. At this time, if you want to come up to the mic and say something. Or Delmar, you don't want to be, either one of you. Okay, so we'll take a mic to you, because these mics are mobile, so.
Thank you for everybody that is here at the tribal council yesterday. I'm sure, well, I received the book and a penalty that has 50th anniversary on it. The more I thought about it, you know, if it wasn't for Gerald, you know, we would never had a college. I think there's 38 tribal colleges throughout the United States. But he went to college at USD and he graduated and he came home. And he, he saw a lot of students drop off. So that was one of the main reasons why he wanted to bring. And he did have problems with Jenklo at that time. He couldn't, you know, he couldn't do that. He went to University of Boulder. And through then, he was able to establish our tribal colleges. And I wanted to mention that. And also, the One Feather song that Delmar's going to sing that was established. And when they were going to World's Fair in Belgium, he sang that song. And it's always, you know, One Feather song. So I just want to mention that part on behalf of Delmar. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody.
I don't know, Lakota yateki, I don't know what's going on. I think I'm going to choose to go. I think that I can, I can't allow that. I don't know, I don't know. 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 I don't know.
Kind of hard to see with the mask on, so I might have to take it off.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Delmar. Delmar has had one question. Was that a boat or a plane you guys went over to Brussels? I was wondering about that.
Translation to that song is, we're riding in an airplane going across the ocean. That's where the gap comes in. And it's probably one of the only songs that has an airplane in it. Innovation, probably. But it's about the airplane going across overseas and coming back again. And we made our tracks over there. We've accomplished our mission. We've done good down there. And we made everybody proud of our nation as it was coming back, pertains to that song. Thank you.
Cool. Hope you're welcome. Thank you again to the One Feather family, for our leadership and, you know, for being here and, you know, you're welcome to stay and have lunch with us. You know, our orders, no permits. And again, just thank you for all the contributions and leadership and all that that you've given to the community and our oriata and our family and stuff like that. And thank you for that amazing song and just describing that history. And, you know, appreciate, appreciate, again, your presence here. So thank, hope you're up to, to Delmar and Ingrid. So, hope you're up.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, with your permission, council's permission, I'd like to just add a credit to Mr. One Feather's, what he, all he's done for this reservation. I'd like to say good morning to all our listeners out there and to the families and friends here on reservation and afar, throughout the country. Many of our relatives live in different states and different countries. But Mr. One Feather, my name is Ed Ironclad. I'm the sergeant-at-arms. Mr. One Feather also is very helpful, instrumental in with our effort to help bring back to Buffalo. He helped with us when we were in infancy stages, when we were bringing Buffalo back. Now it's the Niche Buffalo Nation Society. And I just wanted to thank the family for him because he was very, very helpful for bringing that to today. And we were very fortunate to have our relatives, the oriata amongst us here. And he had a hand in that. So I just want to say, hope you're up.
Thank you, Sergeant At-Arms. And there's a list of all his accomplishments that Ingrid chaired with us. And we'll get these, make sure that the rest of the council gets these. So it was pretty amazing to see everything he's done. So, thank you again. So with that, secretary, if you want to do a call, and we'll go forward after that.
Wesley Hawkins, senior. Blame Little Thunder will be late. Coral Whitehorse.
Here.
Ryan Jumping Eagle.
Here.
Gerald Canoyer. Austin Walken, senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Present.
Wendell Youngman, junior.
Here.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Sir.
Ella Giancarlo.
Here.
George Dreamer, junior.
Present.
Julian Spotted Bear is excused. Richard Ironclad.
Oh.
David Plier.
Here.
Sonya Littlehot Weston.
Here.
Jackie Sears is excused. Michael Carle, senior.
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior. He's excused. Garfield Still.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Yo.
Gerald Canoyer.
Yes, here.
Council, seventeen presidents, three excuse, or three excuse, one wait. So thank you, council. So we'll go to approval, approval of the agenda. Councilman Carlo, do you want to add that item, or do you want to just?
Mr. Chair, before I do this, and we will approve the agenda, but I think the proper way that we should continue with this honoring is that we ask the One Feather family to come up and that, you know, the council congratulate them. So I think, you know, we should carry on with our traditions and, you know, allow the family to come forward so we can congratulate them.
Okay, so we could do that, or go ahead, Councilman Hawkins?
I have two items I'm going to have to put on. So after we're done with honoring them, I need to put two items on ordinance and reservation. I need to be done.
Okay, okay, we can do that. Okay, okay, so Ms. Delmar, if you want to come up here and then maybe the council can help shake your hand. So I know you're singing and stuff like that, so. So, and then, do we want to line up, council, and just, come stand up here, Delmar? Be there, like, whatever, feel comfortable. So, and then we can just come up here and do that, but. Yeah, so it's, yeah. Okay, so I got, so first I got Councilman Carlo to make a motion. And we could, we could talk about, we could add that to the first of the agenda. And then I know that we have Chairman Watkins over there that needs to add a couple items. So, Councilman Carlo, if you want to do that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, members of the executive board. I think it's only fitting, you know, that we take some action here to help one of our colleagues who's lost her mother. So I'd like to make a motion that we assist the family with $1,000, the star quilt cakes and flowers.
Motion made by Councilman Carlo, seconded by Councilman Canoyer. Discussion on the item. Hearing none. Secretary, if you could repeat that one more time, that motion, just to make sure. Thank you.
Motion made by Michael Carle, senior, seconded by Gerald Canoyer, junior, to assist the Spotted Bear family with $1,000, star quilt, flowers and cake.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Secretary, if you could run that roll, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior.
Yes.
Coral Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, junior.
Yes.
Austin Walken, senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Oh.
David Plier.
Yes.
Sonya Littlehot Weston.
Ha.
Michael Carle, senior.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, uh, council. That motion passed seventeen four zero against. Thank you. Uh, couns- or Councilman Jumping Eagle? Do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have some additions too. I'll go after Mr. Watkins.
Sounds good. Um, Chairman Watkins? Chairman Watkins, are you, are you, uh, ready for your items? Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I got a resolution here. The Resolutional Glossu Tribal Council of Glossu Tribe Rectifying and Affirming Appointment to Tribal Prosecutors Land Bill to Fight Burnout Kills Right in Monno, No Me Bear Runner and Extend the Terms of These Tribal Prosecutes Until Such Time As The Positions Can Be Advertized By Tribal Secretary filled by the Tribal Council. Motion.
Second. Motion made, seconded by Councilman DeBray. To add that to the agenda to two thirds of that on, uh, council, this is, it has to be a two thirds vote. Um, any discussion to add that to the agenda at this time? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Secretary, if you could run that vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Yes.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Oh.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, um, Chairman Watkins for your motion. That, that's added to the agenda seventeen four zero against. Uh, Chairman Watkins, your second item?
Thank you, Chairman. Second one to ordinance. Ordinance of Ogasu Tribal Council of Ogasu Tribe Resending Ordinance Number Twenty-Guy Sixty-Four as amended, which impose the reservation wide curfew for all persons and businesses in your reservation due to COVID nineteen public customers. This is motion.
Uh, motion is your second, seconded by Councilman DeBray. Uh, discussion on adding that to the agenda at this time, council? Seeing or hearing none, um, I'm, uh, seeing or hearing none online. Uh, Secretary, if you want to run that. Well, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Oh.
David Clear?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, council, that passes sixteen yes, one no. Uh, thank you, council. And Chairman Watkins, do you have any other items to add?
No, no, talla got. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman Watkins. Uh, Chair, Chairman Jumping Eagle, uh, if you, uh, yeah, I know you had, you had some items.
Thank you, Chair. You know. So Chair, I have four items.
Okay.
Um, the first one is a, um, discussion on OSLH. That's the first one. Um, motion to two thirds of that on.
Motion, seconded by Councilman Yellowboy. Uh, discussion at this time to add that to the agenda. Hearing or seeing none. Um, Secretary, if you could call the roll. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Oh.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, council, that passes seventeen four zero against. Thank you, uh, Chairman Jumping Eagle, your second item?
Hey, this one is a, um, resolution of the Ogasu Tribal Council Removal of the Acting IHS.
Second. Uh, that motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Yellowboy, or Vice Chair Yellowboy, sorry, Vice Chair. Uh, council, any discussion on that item, uh, at this time to add to two thirds? Uh, Councilman Little Hawk Weston?
I think, uh, good morning, uh, council, uh, and our, I guess, visiting, uh, audience here. I guess, uh, I just need more clarification as to who are we talking about? Are we talking about, uh, the acting CEO at IHS, Dr. Jumping Eagle?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, Councilman, uh, I'm sorry, Chairman?
Jumping Eagle?
De- 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 Eagle?
Yes, that's, that was the, um, that's who it. Mr. Doctor Jumping Eagle.
Councilman, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other discussion on that motion to add to the agenda at this time? Hearing or seeing none online. Um, Secretary, if you want to call the roll. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Good.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
No.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
No.
David Clear?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Um, Chairman, that, that didn't get the necessary two thirds of votes to get to the agenda. It, it died on a vote of eleven to six.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, next one is resolution of the Ogasu Tribal Council Removing Catherine Wana from the Pine Ridge IHS.
Second. Okay. Uh, motion by Chairman Jumping Eagle, seconded by Vice Chair Yellowboy. Uh, council, any discussion on that item at this time? Okay. Um, oh, Councilman Yellow, or, hey, Councilman Ironclad, sorry about that.
What's the, what's behind this? What's the story behind this?
Um, Chairman, Chairman Jumping Eagle?
Chairman? Um, we had a motion made. There was a motion made at our last HHS meeting. I don't know who the motion maker was. So, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't recall who the motion maker was or.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Councilman, uh, Steele, did you, did you want to ask?
Yeah, um, you know, with, with IHS and, and the structure, you know, the, the treatment, our, our own people that are working there, are receiving from this individual, and there's nothing being done about it. I mean, we're looking out for our, our tribal members, especially the ones that work there. And to, to work in a hostile environment with an individual like that and, and having no support at the, at a higher level with the supervisors, you know, is it, that person, you know, i- i- she's not in the best interest of our people there. And that's why we decided to take this action. And if these resolutions fail by two thirds of all, I'm gonna entertain a motion that they be put on our regular session where we would have just the majority of all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Councilman Ironclad, you still have the floor?
Well, that's okay right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing or seeing none? Um, or, no, 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 we're doing the, we're doing the motion. So, um, Secretary, if you want to call that roll. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Yes.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, uh, thank you, um, council. Uh, that motion passes seventeen four zero against. It meets the two thirds, uh, requirement. Um, Chairman Jumping Eagle, your, your fourth item?
So Chair, this one, um, I think we could cover it under the task force. I think Alicia is gonna do this one. So that's all we have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, council, any other items for discussion to add? Any chairs? Uh, seeing none. Uh, is there a motion to, oh, oh, but, uh, uh, Councilman Steele?
Chairman, um, there's some action the council took um, regarding the, um, the appointees, um, doing their background checks and still one has not complied. So I'd like to put that discussion on since it was a council agenda item as executive session at some point today. So that'd be my motion.
Uh, before we do the motion, Councilman, is that gonna be covered in the, the hearing on the?
No, it has nothing to do with the hearing.
Okay, okay, okay. So I'll, I'll, um, is there a, a motion was made by the Councilman Steele? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Carlo and Councilman Carlo? Any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none online. Uh, Secretary, if you could run that vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins?
Good.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
So.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Uh, thank you, Secretary. Uh, so the motion passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you. And I want to recognize Councilman Yellow Thunder at eleven fifteen. Thank you. Um, council, is any other items to add?
Correction, we, uh, build under.
Oh, wait, missing. Oh. Pitching the wrong district, your counselor. So, yeah, build better. Um, sorry about that.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, motion to approve by Councilman DeBray, seconded by, uh, Councilman Little Hawk Weston and Councilman Canoyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing that online. Um, Secretary, if you could run that vote to approve the agenda. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Coral Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes. Yes.
Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Oh.
David Clear?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, council, that passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, council. Uh, so we'll move on. So we have a, you know, a lot of items, but it's, um, okay, so we'll, we'll move on to, uh, so we'll go to item number six and I'll turn that over to the Vice President, uh, if she's ready. And, uh, yeah, and then she could take you through this. And, uh, yeah, so, uh, just give her your attention, council. There's a, uh, a, um, a projector up there that, that has what she's reading from. So if you can't see it, I know they're gonna turn the lights off, so don't fall asleep. Um, you know, and so, yeah, so you could better see it. Um, but yeah, so, uh, Vice President, the, the four jurors, thank you.
Thanks. I hope I don't put you guys asleep. Uh, so thank you, council, for allowing us to, um, give you a report and kind of take the time to introduce the task force to you. The task force came under my office on February third from Law and Order. Um, and, and it has been a team effort. So, um, we do want to make the time to explain some things. We are in a pan- global pandemic. We're coming up on a year of being in it. And so we did want to just kind of make sure we took the time to explain some of the things that have happened and some of the major things that are going on right now so that we can make informed decisions, um, for our people. So first and foremost, I just want us all to take a moment, um, and, and silence for those who have passed on from our communities, our relatives, our loved ones. This, this virus is something else and, and it has claimed some of our relatives. So let's give us a moment to remember them and, and pray for them in our own ways. Thank you, Council. So this, this is, you know, I'd like to give us a brief review first. Um, Ihaani, one year ago, we found ourselves in a global pandemic. None of us have ever been in a global pandemic. Um, unless we have, so I don't think we have anyone old enough in here to be, um, have, have experienced the Spanish Flu, but one year ago, we found ourselves in a global pandemic, and when we've never been in this before. So it's been quite a learning experience, to say the least, and we're still learning every day. So we do know it's very important for us to get you guys information and get our community information, and so usually when a, when a pandemic or epidemic or anything of that sort happens, there's a public health system in place and a response on this public health system. Unfortunately, our tribe does not have a public health department or system in place. Um, as you can see from this diagram here, this is from the CDC, there are many, many organizations and departments, federal, from federal to local to nonprofit to, you know, even our families, we've found, are part of this public health response. So, so it's very complex. The response is very complex to something like this, and a public health system is needed to help create that response. Um, because there's multiple levels, and as you can see, this is another, these are the ten essential public health services that help to communities, the federal government, to respond to a public pandemic or public health crisis. And there are many other public health, uh, crises that we have in our communities. This one really has brought to the attention that we need a public health department. So we do not have a public health department to respond, but we have Steve Wilson in emergency management, right? And Incident Command S- System is always foundational to public health as well, so we at least have this one piece that helps us figure out how to respond, coordinate, and organize. So as you can see, there's an incident command diagram with different, um, folks on there, different components that are all needed to help kind of organize and, and, uh, make sense of the chaos, if you will. So on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, the state of emergency was declared for our tribe, and on March nineteenth, the Public Health Emergency Response Infectious Disease Ordinance was created. It was actually amended from the other one, but it was, so that is something I did email to you all, is that ordinance twenty seventeen, because that's sort of like, um, our Bible, if you will, for this response. It has a lot of components, and we understand, and that this is a living document, so we understand that we do need to go back to that and look at it and change it, and I think we're gonna utilize this month and next month to go back and look at that, make those changes, because, like I said, we're learning things every day. There's new things that are happening every day. So we know we need to update that, a- and we are gonna get to that. But I do, um, want to stop sharing my screen, because I would like our task force, who have really stepped up to help with this whole process, introduce themselves to you, because this has really been a team effort, and everybody in this room is a part of the team as well, right? Even our communities, our families, we're all a part of this team. Um, and so I really, you know, we try to do things in a good way here, every time we meet and honor people, and anytime we do anything, um, so I do want you guys to meet them. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so that they can, I know there's some on Zoom, and we do have Dolores Poyer, um, here as well, so I don't know, Dolores, if you wanna kick us off, since you're here, then we can go to the Zoom.
Sorry about that. Um, my name is Dolores Poyer, also known as George to some of most people. I, I am the Ogallisou Tribe Public uh, Health Administrator, as well as recently being identified as the Public Health Authority in May of twenty twenty.
Thank you, George. Can you explain a little bit of what you do? Because you do a lot. Also, can everybody on the task force kind of explain it? Everybody doesn't like to explain what they do, but they do a lot, so I just kind of wanna give them a little bit of time to explain all the things they do, because as I showed in that, that pyramid earlier, there are so many components, there's so many pieces, and we don't have that system in place right now, so people are filling in, so I'm sorry, Dolores, if you could do that, and everyone else, that would be great. Thank you.
Depends on how much time we have today. Just kidding. Um, when, um, after the pandemic began, um, and then in May, we were, um, as I mentioned, was identified as the Public Health Authority, because we had nobody in the tribe to be, um, identified or receive, um, the COVID nineteen tests, whether they were negative, positive, or, you know, just the reporting. So, um, since that was identified and passed, um, I was able to obtain the IHS reports on the number of cases being tested, uh, the number of positives, negatives, even if they're pending, as well as from the South Dakota Department of Health. So those come on an everyday basis, whether somebody is, even if there's no positive test, we still receive them, and it, um, includes the number of tests administered and the number of, um, negative cases, or if there's any pending. So then a report is developed and issued daily to the public, as well as to tribal council members, and, um, tribal programs and other organizations, schools and such too, so we can keep them abreast of the changes that are occurring on our reservation, how it's affecting our members of our tribe. Um, we have recently received, um, information from IHS concerning vaccinations, so we're able to now include that on the report. Um, we're still waiting for more information to be approved by headquarters or Aberdeen area, um, to include more information concerning the vaccination process. Um, once those, to step back a little bit, once those positive cases are received, um, we are then, they're then issued to the contact tracers, so they could begin the immediate investigation to try to contain the virus. So they will contact the, um, positive cases and identify any close contacts, and they're either put in isolation or in quarantine. Um, the difference between that is the isolation, they need to remain away from others for at least a period of ten days, and it can be extended based on their symptoms, if their symptoms are continuing. Um, a quarantine person is a close contact, and they are, um, in quarantined for fourteen days. Again, they still kind of have to stay away from other people of the family or, you know, other individuals as well too, so just in case they convert. So, um, there's a lot more that goes on to it, but basically, that's in a nutshell.
Thank you, Dolores. Councilman Carlo, did it have anything to relate to that, or, because we're gonna go into details in those pieces too, or does it? A question directly for Dolores?
I don't know who my question is direct at, but I just wanna know what type of, uh, quarantine sites. Are we still operating the one in Kyle, the one by the airport, or, you know, are these facilities still being utilized?
Yep, sure. We're, we're gonna get to that i- in the further end. Can, I just, can I go through the introductions? That okay, okay?
No, just now. Just kidding.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, George. Anything else, or?
No, I think that's it for now.
Thank you. And then whoever on the Zoom, um, I don't know if we wanna go by alphabetical order, just to make it easier, um, by first name. So if you're on the task force and your name is first in alphabetical, that's just the easiest way. Sorry, guys. Looks like Dakota. Are you kicking it off for us? Dakota, are you on?
Uh, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dakota.
Good morning, uh, Tribal Council. Um, thank you for, um, thank you, and as well as, uh, President Killer, uh, the Executive Board for, um, calling this meeting today, and, um, is a Corona's coronavirus update. Uh, my name is Dakota Highhawk. I am the Office Manager out of the Chief of Staff Office, and I was appointed to the, um, task force, um, back when the, almost a year ago, when the pandemic first started. And as we went along and had our meetings, we, um, we eventually, um, went into our, uh, Internet Command System, and, uh, within the Internet Command System, I'm the Public Information Officer, and so, um, part of my duty is to, is to uh, share the, um, information that's being provided through the, um, Public Health Authority, uh, which is the data, uh, COVID nineteen report, and any other, uh, information um, that we need to get out to the public, uh, regarding, uh, then it was the lockdowns, um, any, uh, health education material uh, that would be shared, um, whether it be through IHS, um, the CHR program. Um, if there was any information that, uh, any entity had to share and they need that, needed, uh, to maximize the outreach in that, um, I would help, you know, expedite that process by, um, providing and sharing that information amongst our task force members and the ICS system, um, and also to Keely Radio, and, and also coordinating any live panel discussions that, um, we needed to do with any of our members, uh, regarding a particular, uh, topic. Um, in the upcoming weeks, we have, um, scheduled, uh, live panel discussions, uh, with, uh, with, uh, medical doctors, epidemiologists, that is on our team, um, in collaboration with, uh, Great Plains as well, um, to focus on, uh, some of the areas that we're, um, looking at now and, and going through in this pandemic, which is the vaccines, and, um, the variants that are coming, uh, that we're, we're hearing about. Um, so those will be coming soon, and, um, so I also, uh, fa- facilitate, have been facilitating uh, the meetings, uh, in the task force, and, um, you know, just helping out where I can, um, in response. So, once again, thank you all for your time, and, uh, we look forward to, um, working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dakota, and I realize that we do have another task force member here, uh, Karen Eagle, um, and she also does information, so, um, Dana, before I get to you, Karen, since you are here, could you, um, let folks know who you are and what you do for the task force, please? Thank you.
Um, good morning, Council. My name is Karen Eagle, and I'm the Media Relations Specialist for the tribe. Um, in my position, when the task force was created, I was asked to attend to um, share that information with the public, and from that point, they asked me to sit on the task force to assist, um, um, the, um, Public Information Officer, and so I was pretty active with the Council early on. And then as things kind of leveled, um, as far as getting all the information that comes out from the task force and putting it on the, all of the tribe's social media, and at this point, we have a COVID information page on Facebook. We have the tribe's official page on Facebook. We have a Twitter account, and we have a website, and the website for the majority of the pandemic timeframe has been dedicated to the COVID response of the tribe, so that's what I do for the task force. Thank you.
If you can, my apologies for, uh, Dana?
Laimbe tuashteyuha wambli ohipika wia imachiapi. Good afternoon or good morning, Council. My name is Dana Barivigal, and I'm the Tribal Education Agency Director, and I've been serving on the task force close to a year, and my function, um, with the task force is to serve as the liaison between the task force, the tribe, the education committee, um, with all of the educational institutions that serve our children, our residents, our members of our tribe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. John? John?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, John. Go ahead.
Uh, good morning. My name is John Sincelaw, uh, Deputy Director of Emergency Management. Um, been in that position probably too long, uh, about five years now, and the, uh, Operations Section Chief under the, uh, COVID Task Force.
Thank you, John. Brian?
Uh, good morning, Tribal Council. Um, thank you for having us, and, uh, as you, some of you know, um, I am in-house counsel for the Chief of Staff Office. Um, I am a licensed attorney, and I'm also a registered nurse. I served for the IHS for many years. Uh, ten of those years was as a public health nurse. And so, um, I've been working with the task force from the beginning, and, um, as far as, uh, duties that I do, I, um, I'm probably, uh, an all-around. I've done just about everything except deliver food. Um, I help with the, uh, uh, legislation documents, if we need, uh, new ordinances. I've worked with the in-house tribal attorneys in developing the shelter in place, um, the border monitoring, the, uh, quarantine orders, all, all, pretty much all the health orders, except for the financial ones. I haven't gotten involved with the financial aspects. Um, I also facilitate the, uh, subcommittee within the task force. We call ourselves the Medical Work Group. It became very apparent in the beginning that, um, we needed some medical expertise in responding to this, um, pandemic. So we have, uh, a small group of, um, tribal members and, um, a couple physicians and, on, on our medical work group, and we consult with experts from the CDC, and also from the University of Nebraska Medical Center, and also, um, uh, more recently with the, uh, Great Plains, uh, Tribal Leaders Health Board, uh, Epidemiology Center. Um, so, um, we've been, uh, working diligently and trying to, um, keep up with what's going on with the virus and the community spread here, and, um, I guess that's, that's about it, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Dr. Jumping Eagle?
I'm Dr. Sarah Jumping Eagle. I'm a pediatrician. I'm the, uh, current permanent clinical director and acting CEO at the Pine Ridge Service Unit. Um, I've been a part of the task force since it started, um, the, in, as part of the Indian Health Service and collaborating with, um, the Ogallisou Tribe Emergency Management System and with the task force itself and part of the medical work group. Um, and I just wanna say that I'm really, um, honored to be a part of this team. I think, um, you know, although we know that the, uh, COVID pandemic has been, you know, a hardship on our people, our community, um, that this team has really worked well together, collaborated, um, put a lot of time, energy, um, in our spirits into the efforts to help protect the community, um, and that's always, you know, what we're working towards, um, and looking at, you know, development of plan, um, regarding. development of plan regarding testing. How can we make sure that we have as much available to the community for any worst-case scenario? So I just want to thank everyone on the task force and thank the tribal council for this opportunity to share information about the work that we're doing. As part of the task force, I've attended at times almost task force meetings that were occurring in the evenings, multiple times a week, many months at a time. Also part of the medical work group meetings, which were occurring weekly, again, evenings and weekends. And then I did assist with the development of the COVID Task Force protocols, including working with Corrections and working with some of the schools, the quarantine sites. We've offered through OEHE to do reviews at some of the sites to include recommendations to improve patient safety and infection control procedures. As stated, we collaborate with Incident Command and Emergency Management System through OST. We've had tabletop emergency management drills. And I think we did that back in April of 2020. And that really helped us lay a foundation for things that we as the task force and Incident Command needed to work on. I helped the task force develop the COVID testing protocol and implementation. And then of course, we've worked together on the COVID vaccine plan. And that at times required for several months at a time, daily updates, public service announcements. And then I also helped to coordinate the data as Dolores was talking about so that we provide to the Public Health Authority for the tribe. We've also worked on COVID testing and COVID vaccine events and the development of public service announcements for that. We've been having weekly radio shows to update people on what's available and just general information about COVID, the testing and the vaccines and what the CDC recommendations are. We've also helped coordinate testing and vaccinations at Corrections, Nursing Home, Police, EMS. And at times on short notice, you know, when they had the fire last summer, we went out to a football field and tested firefighters that were coming onto the reservation to assist. Also met with schools as requested to review their, their plans as well. But again, I want to thank you for the time and the attention to this, to the COVID pandemic. Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Eagle. Shawnee?
Good afternoon, rather. My name is Shawnee Red Bear. I serve on the Oglala Sioux Tribe COVID Task Force as well as the Incident Command. I do serve as the logistics chief within the Incident Command. As most of you are aware, I was at one point coordinating the food effort to the general population as well as quarantine homes and quarantine sites. More so since we've, another entity took that over, I do provide resources or I looked, I seek out resources that could come into Oglala Sioux Tribe during the COVID pandemic. I have been a part of both efforts since the very beginning, which almost about a year now. And that's pretty much what I do is just kind of the all-around resource, getting things to and from and ensuring that our population continues to be fed throughout the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawnee. Can I skip over Dr. Butterbrook?
Wapetuwa shte. Mark Butterbrook, Imachiap, Wasichiwaka, Oglala Lakutu Nursing Home, Wasichamoyolo. Naku OST Medical Task Force, Wasichamoyolo. I work, I'm the medical director at the nursing home. And I'm also been helping the medical task force with the COVID-19 response since last spring. I'm a retired commander in the United States Public Health Service and had a 45-year career mostly in Indian country, both in urban areas and out here in South Dakota. I'm originally from South Dakota. I just want to say that working with the medical task force and the seed of the teamwork among the, the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the Indian Health Service in response to this emergency has been a great privilege of my 45-year career. I just can't say enough about the kind of teamwork and selflessness that people on the task force bring to the table. My role has been supporting Rayanne Redowl, who really got the testing program going. And we tested several thousand tribal members, sometimes under fairly trying circumstances, 100-degree weather, sometimes 25-degree weather, wind and so on. But we got out there to the most remote areas of the reservation, testing the people. And that's in great part due to the work of George Purrier at OST Health Administration. And also the great help we got from Dr. Jumping Eagle and the lab people at IHS and the public health nurses and some of the other nurses at IHS. And in particular, Rayanne Redowl, my longtime colleague who I worked with in Kyle years ago, back in the 1990s. And who, Rayanne really brought the testing together. And, and we had a lot of fun with that. So that's kind of, that was kind of my role.
Thank you, Dr. Butterbrook. Lisa, I accidentally skipped over you as well. My apologies. Lisa?
Good morning, tribal council. This is Lisa Jumping Eagle de Leon. Worked for OST CHR, was asked a year ago to, for volunteers to help sit on the task force. So that's task force since day one and also the medical work group. We pretty much are jack-of-all-trades except for vaccinations. We've done everything from investigations to tracing, food deliveries, testing. We do intake at the testing sites. We are currently doing the By Next, that are testing them to see our staff. And I think we're going to open it up to other programs. It's not too popular right now, so we're going to see if we could get that opened up to other programs in case they want to get tested. And we're just on standby right now. In case the numbers go up, we will step up to start assisting with contact tracing and investigation, food deliveries, whatever their, whatever help they need, we'll step up and help out. I believe food delivery went to contact tracing, so we're no longer doing that. Other than that, we've just been super busy. There's endless hours that our staff has done to help get this virus under control. And we've also started transporting more patients to IHS and opening that up. We've got plexiglass in our vehicles so that there's less exposure to our staff. Our, our office has been hit a couple of times. However, we follow really strict protocols to ensure the safety of our staff and our patients. And so there really hasn't been a spread within the office or transport. So that's a good thing. I really like to, uh, say thanks to my staff. They've been really, really good at stepping up and going and taking whatever they can to help, help us slow the spread of this deadly virus. If you have any questions, you can ask.
Thanks, Lisa. And looks like last but not least, Steve?
Good morning, afternoon, council. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and do a brief and update for the COVID-19 response. So I'm the emergency manager here for the tribe. We also sit on the task force, Incident Command. To try and tie these departments together a little bit, I'll talk about real quick here. In 2020, the OST declared a state of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. In, in doing so, we were granted a declaration by FEMA, emergency declaration by FEMA. And also other assistance from other programs while doing that. The council set up a task force for the tribe to help develop a lot of the policies and a lot of the, the planning that goes into the response for this. As everybody else across the world basically throwing our plans out the window because of the fact it was something that most and all pretty much have not dealt with. So starting from scratch, we've also had to do the same thing. You have a task force, you have an incident command with the tribe. You also have an incident command with IHS that all tie together to, to put policy and procedures together. As far as the incident command goes, you know, what, what we develop in the task force, we execute under the incident command on the field. So from the start of this thing, we put together the, a lot of the processes that we, that we, that we've been working on for the past 12 months or so. From quarantine sites to transports to food deliveries to, to a lot of this stuff. You know, bulk resources across the reservation, things like that. So what you heard from today from the task force and a lot of the Incident Command personnel is the, the job, job duties and descriptions that these individuals volunteered and stepped up to do. You also have a lot of council representatives that are, that are new, that played a huge role in last year's response as well, that were very active within their communities and within the task force and the Incident Command. So I think that's about all I got right now for introduction. And kind of hopefully that kind of give you an idea on how the, how the three entities kind of work together, sort of like a unified command during this response. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And Steve did mention we did have some council members. So Councilman Roy was also on the task force. And now he's a colleague and colleagues. Like I said, we're all a team. And so I just want to thank you guys for taking the time to meet the task force. Like they said, they've been in it for a very long time, since the very beginning. They have that knowledge, they have that history. And, and as we all know, we need to remember our history. So we learn from it and we move forward and we make those changes. And we have been making those changes, like, like a lot of folks mentioned. We've had different levels and I'm going to get to that. But I do understand that the lunch will be here at noon. Is that correct, Madam Secretary? Okay, would we like to do a working lunch though? If someone would like to offer a lunch prayer? And then we can get our lunch and then we'll pick back up with the rest of this presentation. Mr. Broken Nose, would you like to offer our meal prayer, please?
They asked me to say the meal grace prayer or whatever. I kind of have a hard hearing, so sometimes I can't hear that good, but that's okay. That's fine. I know my voice is go up to the wakachka.
So we'll take, we'll take about five minutes for folks to get their, their lunch. And if we could have the elders, go ahead and, and make yourself your plates in. And then we will get back to this. Thank you, guys.